All right, I've got five o'clock. Call the meeting to order today, Monday, December twentieth, twenty twenty one. Roll call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlow, and town manager Jesse Dunbar. Adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change? Okay, approval of minutes, we have the minutes from December sixth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from December sixth, twenty twenty one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, shame.
Um, next, we have warrants. Saw from FY twenty two, we have warrant fifty seven for forty three thousand eighty dollars and sixty two cents, fifty eight for fourteen thousand three hundred seventy one dollars and fifty seven cents, fifty nine for ten thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars and eight cents, warrant sixty for one thousand seven hundred sixty four dollars and three cents.
I make a motion to approve warrants fifty seven through sixty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants fifty seven through sixty. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, financial reports. That's you, Jesse.
So these reports are as of November thirtieth, which is forty two percent on the way through the fiscal year. In November, we received another twenty six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in property taxes, uh, which is slightly under last year's total, um, for this time of year, but it's ahead of pace for all other recent years in our planning system. We also received just over thirty four thousand in motor vehicle excess tax, which is again behind last year's pace, but ahead of our FY twenty two budget at forty four percent. In the Worf Fund, we received just over forty four hundred in Worf use fees in November, and most of these fees have now been cleared. Under the expense line, a couple of things to point out, um, the overall, the administration cost center is at thirty three percent of budget, so that continues to be on pace to come in under budget. However, there are, um, a couple of line items worth keeping an eye on. The attorney line has increased by three thousand dollars in November, bringing us to eighty three percent of the amount budgeted for FY twenty two. I do expect to need a larger increase when I do next week's, uh, my next month's financial reports for December with bills that have come in since then as well. Um, public works budget is slightly ahead of pace at this point, running at forty five percent. Right now, that's mainly due to the road projects, um, that we completed back this summer. Uh, there are some, uh, repairs to trucks one and truck two, which you approved on past warrants that will be reflected in next month's financials, which will most likely drive that, uh, amount up again. And in the general ledger for FY twenty two, I anticipated we'd receive eighty four thousand dollars from the revenue sharing from the state. So far, we've received fifty six thousand eight hundred and eighty, or sixty seven percent of the estimate, which means we're well ahead of budget, um, for this point in the year.
So it looks pretty good, yeah, huh?
Yeah. Any questions?
I make a motion to accept the July through November twenty twenty one financial reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July through November twenty twenty one financial reports. Is there any discussion? All of us in favor? All right, now moving on to regular business. Uh, the first thing we have is the campground moratorium. The, um, we received a que- request from Cindy Lawson to speak on behalf of the CTR group, um, about the, a possible public hearing for a possible extension on the, uh, moratorium ordinance. She said that she would not be able to attend tonight, so either her Steve or, um, Ed Davis would be speaking on her behalf.
First of all, uh, I'd like to thank the board for letting us come and never bring this before you. First thing I'd like to mention to the board, because there has been rumors and accusations around town about that we were against business in town, and I'd like to dispel that myth that we are not against business at all. Uh, we're, we're in favor of business in town. Uh, I'm a business person myself, my family's been here forever, and well, Steve can speak to that as well. Um, and we'd like to see business in town. So, to go back to, um, the campground moratorium, everybody knows now that this is one of the largest things that's been proposed in town. And it's caused a lot of controversy, people, a lot of people don't like it. And when it happened, we looked at the ordinances and found that there was really no protection for beer butters. And I think Steve can speak to that.
Absolutely.
If he likes it.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, we've, uh, we've realized in, through the planning board's own admission, that our ordinances are well way and equipped to handle this surge in development, especially campground related development, which is truly all we are pinpointing, we are not after any sort of other development, uh. And we have a lot of holes in our ordinance, and we would like, uh, we would certainly like an extension in order to get this corrected. Um, we need a little bit more time to work with the planning board and to get some more feedback from members of the town in order to really go about this in a way that includes everybody, um, as opposed to, uh, doing a, you know, sort of a quick and dirty, uh, correction to our, um, to our ordinances that wouldn't really benefit the entire town.
I think you probably all got a letter that we sent to you. In that letter, it says campgrounds and transient lodges. And we included that because the two are not mutually exclusive. Uh, right now, the planning board has already had another, uh, campground brought before them, but they're calling it something else. And the problem is, the ordinances are not really updated. Um, we, we think about campgrounds as tents, and that's a thing of the past. Uh, now it's RVs, it's, it's cabins, it's, uh, yurts, it's, uh, all kinds of things. And you have in your ordinance, you have, you have, um, where it says buildings and tents and so on. Um, and then there's another part of the ordinance where it brings up commercial uses where cabins are also mentioned. So there's no distinguishing what cabins are, is cabins a campground, so on and so forth. And I think, uh,
Absolutely.
You can, you can talk to that because, um, you went to the heels more on that.
That's, that's right. Um, and it's something that we, uh, while I think sometimes we're kind of singled out like we're a small group of people wanting this changed, we really represent obviously a huge number of people in this town, and it's evident by our moratorium vote and the, um, comprehensive plan survey that was recently done. If you look at this, the results of that, see it's pretty obvious that people want some change, and we, uh, we've got a lot of people who signed our petition and voted for this moratorium that really want this done the correct way.
So, so we started in November, uh, informally just discussing what changes might occur. And all kinds of options were thrown out. Um, I personally don't think that banning campgrounds myself is a great idea, but there are some in town who believe that. Um, what we want to do is to spend more time with this, get the community involved. Uh, we're hoping in the next few weeks to have a community forum where we can kind of see where the community is on what, what they're looking at. Do we want to just make changes to the ordinance? Or does a vast majority of town want a banned campground? We don't really know the answer to that, but, um, we as a group have put together some ideas, and some of that is in your information we sent to you. We haven't made any decision ourselves, because that's not our place. Uh, we, we're just trying to put out ideas and see what the community is lar- at large wants. The community at large is going to make that decision in the end, uh, what we want. And, um, so, um, we, we put that out, and in December, um, the group retained a professional planner. And I think his resume is in your packet as well. And he's a person who has nothing to do with us, he's a person who simply, that's his job, he goes through all over the place, uh, all over the country, really, uh, helping communities. Uh, his most recent, uh, assignment was on the Outer Banks of North Carolina, in a town very much like Tremont, that's a fishing community that was getting overrun with tourists. And the development was getting so bad that people didn't know what to do, and they hired him to help them out, try to get some ordinances that would retain the businesses in town, but yet try to limit the over, the growth that was happening. And we're kind of in the same situation as that town in North Carolina. Um, last year, we had four million people in Acadia National Park, that's a record. And they're only a few miles away, uh, over there, and if we keep having development that brings more and more people into town, uh, to live, uh, we'll be in a situation like Bar Harbor is, where there'll be more transients living in town than residents. And, um, in reading the survey that was sent out to everybody, all of the, um, voters in town, all of the taxpayers in town, brother, it said that, um, when, when we got it back, we analyzed that data and separated out what people thought about different issues. And, um, vast majority of these people who responded to the survey wanted Tremont to stay as it is. They didn't want it to, uh, have tremendous growth, they wanted a small amount of growth. They weren't big on commercial activities, except for waterfront activities. And, um, I think that the person who put that together is going to analyze it for the planning board, I understand. Uh, and I think you'll see the conclusions to that, but we, we, we've gone through that and looked it over to see what people were thinking about. So, that, that kind of, um, you know, growth is something that is concerning to the town. Uh, I myself and many other residents are concerned about that people who are growing up here will not have, be able to stay here. And that's a, a kind of a big issue. My family's been here forever, and, um, we have nephews now growing up, and they're tenth generation, and we'd like for them to be able to live here just like we do. And I think a lot of people in the community feel the same way. And if we just have growth where large tracts of land are taken away to serve as transients, that's happening everywhere now, um, I think the town is not going to have a place for a community, and we could lose our community. Uh, that's a major pressure here in this town. There's a lot of other pressures too, I'm sure you're aware of things. But one of my big concerns is the loss of the lobster industry, that's my family's business. And right now, with global warming, with the lobsters moving toward Canada, and now federal regulations to, uh, have fishermen have new expensive gear for whale and tangling, could kill the industry. And I think as Tremont moves forward, they need to take that into consideration in their comprehensive plan, that, you know, this town, we could lose our town very easily, uh, with that, those kind of pressures. So, that being said, you got any other?
No, absolutely, I, I, one of the biggest things that was stated by people in the town is they want to preserve our working waterfront, uh, which I very much agree, as someone who works on the water and comes from generations of it. Um, and I just look back to what's happened in Bar Harbor, I think, you know, you go downtown there, you go down to the harbor yields, you can remember a time when it was just all working, and now it's almost all the worst industry down there is for cruise boats, things like that. It's, uh, it's not anti-business, it's honestly pro-business for a lot of these things that happen, so we thank you for your time.
And so, that being said, we'd like to urge the town to extend the moratorium. Uh, the planning board's going to hold a public hearing on January eleventh to get input from the community. Um, what we'd like to see is ordinances put together by May, so they can be voted on by, um, the residents of Tremont. And I think that may be difficult for the planning board to do, but I think if they allow the community at large to be involved in this, I don't see why we can't put it together. And what we need to, um, moratorium extended till that happens, so that you won't have other campgrounds, uh, accepted, um, as, you know, the possibility of having other campground. The, the people in Tremont, um, voted this moratorium in so that no camp, new, no new campgrounds would be, uh, accepted before these new ordinances are put into place. So, um, I think that's all I got to say.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any comments from the board?
Yes, great.
Um, I just had a couple of questions.
Uh huh.
The gentleman mentioned, um, the surveys that went out and those come back, and those are the part of that change, are those part of the comprehensive plan surveys that are?
Yes.
And when's the comprehensive plan rewrite, um, due?
Several years.
Several years from now, yeah.
Several years from now. And the results of that survey are they public, Jesse?
Yes.
Okay.
On the website.
And then the, uh, second question I'm going to have, I guess, is the, um, the ability to extend a moratorium, uh, I think calls onto the selectmen, if I understand it? And the selectmen would have to hold a public hearing and it gets into the planning board's public hearing?
Yep.
I'm just trying to sort that through with, you know, the timing of the issue, so the planning board has a public hearing, doesn't preclude, what I'm understanding would be the selectors, um, that need to hold a public hearing.
Yeah, our decision tonight would be to, um, either hold a public hearing, um, to, to hear people's concerns. To schedule one, yes.
Which would require the advertisements and that's.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a question for CTR, I, I hear a lot, well, we deal a lot with CTR, but, um, where do you actually post your meetings so that people can attend?
We haven't really had any meetings yet, we're simply been discussing them ourselves. We hope to have some meetings in the future that would be open to the whole public, but at this point, we haven't got to that. We're only, we're just compiling data at this time.
So it's kind of a small, like the sixteen people on Amy Chow's email, is that the CTR group?
Well, it's, it's, it's that, and it's just members of the community that, you know, are, are interested in this area.
So, right now, your meetings are all private, and then later on, you'll post for public meetings to attend?
Right now, we're compiling information. Uh, we've been looking at the surveys, we've been looking at, you know, what, all of the things that happened during the process of, um, putting this campground into place, there was a lot of public comment, and so we've been going through all those, what people said in their meetings, and putting that information together. So, that's sort of where we are right now. But we're going to have a public hearing, not a public hearing, but a forum where the whole public can join in and say whatever they want, and so we can get a, a broad opinion from the whole town. What we want is what's, what all of the people in town are thinking right now.
Okay, so just to be clear, up until now, they're private meetings, and then they'll become public later on? So I just want to make sure that's what it is. And the group of people on Amy Chow's email, uh, the CTR group themselves, until they expand it to public? We just need to know.
Yeah, other people are involved, but we can't go to the public until we read through land use ordinances, look at other people's land use ordinances, that's, we've been doing a tremendous amount of research so that we don't waste time and there aren't unintended consequences from anything that we threaten. We want something that will work with the community.
We're not putting together ordinances as it is right now, we're simply gathering information.
Yes, I, that's why I just, that's why I assumed it was all private meetings and it will become public so, sometime, and we'll see it posted someplace, that's all I want to know.
True, yes.
And there's sixteen people on that email that Amy Chow has sent out to everybody, and other people that we need to know or are responsible for.
We'd love to involve the whole town, and part of that is the planning board, on January eleventh will have a meeting that's open to the whole town, uh.
I just need that core group, I just need that moving up, that's all, I'm just making sure it's, thank you.
I just have a quick question, the CTR is sort of acting like a town-appointed committee, and they're not. I mean, you keep talking about the comprehensive plan survey results and things like that. We have an appointed comprehensive plan committee in town. As far as I've seen, none of the CTR members have asked to be appointed to be any town committees. I mean, you kind of, it's, I kind of agree, like, it's sort of like a secret society or secret meet.
There's nothing sacred about it. There's nothing sacred about it.
But it's not public, and it's not appointed by the.
We're, we're having to make it public as well.
I just, I'm not sure it's the CTR committees or group, whatever, to be pawing through all of the comprehensive plan stuff on their own, does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, it's, it is.
And we advertise for committees on a regular basis, and, and as far as I know, I haven't seen any applications from.
No, and we do everything we can to participate in any public meeting we have, in any, uh, in any committee meeting we have.
Okay.
We've tried to show up a lot of meetings to understand how the different groups are meeting, what the issues are. We've been doing a lot of research, the comprehensive plan is, is, and the land use ordinances are long and expensive and take.
Right, I mean, Kevin and I are on the comprehensive plan committee, so I get that, I understand, so, okay, just curious.
Great.
Um, I just want to point out, um, something to the selectmen, I say, consider now or in the future extending, uh, the moratorium that, you know, the moratorium came about, about citizens' petitions with signatures, and the facts that were there on that signature page are different today than they were when that was circulated to account, um, to get it on the agenda. Um, the language that went through our door claimed two pending campgrounds. It also claimed a hundred and seventy five pending campground sites. Those aren't the facts that exist now, there's fifty five that were approved, okay? So I just ask the selector to consider that language that the people made before just pushing that forward, whether or not that is the current set of facts that were in the moratorium, um, and if it's indeed, um, turned by the, the people, then wouldn't there have to be another citizen's petition based on facts of the time?
I can quickly comment that, I mean, the petition was circulated at that time, right, but the vote was held after.
I'm just, I'm just asking the selector who have the ability to consider this, to consider the facts at that time when they extend it, because they may be different than what started the catalyst for the petition.
Yeah, and I think, Jesse, you might be able to answer this, but that, I mean, that's beyond me, as far as that's a legal question, um, that we would have to check those, you know, or James.
I think you want to discuss it during the public hearing if you're scheduled one?
Yeah, okay. Steve, did you have anything?
Oh, no, just want to say there, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. One, are the dates set, the January eleventh date, is that set in stone? That's for the, that's, that's for the public hearing, is that, oh, Kevin decided, right?
Any more?
Oh, that's a planning board.
It's not connected, it's not a requirement of the moratorium. They just want to have one to get feedback on ordinance changes, so they've scheduled one for January eleventh.
Okay, understood, so there's not a public hearing scheduled yet for the moratorium?
Extension, no.
Extension, all right. Um, do you guys have an idea of when that date will be? We just want to make sure that we can attend. Not yet.
I think that's our decision that we'll be making tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then also too, I just want to say to, uh, Mr. Ed, I think that a lot of valid points, I understand you're concerned in the community about businesses and the growth of businesses and the rate of the growth of businesses. Um, but right now, this moratorium, um, really is only affecting our family, because there are no other campgrounds. People are trying to find their way around being a campground by calling themselves something different. So we've invested, we want to come home, we want to move with our family. My, um, mother-in-law wants to be able to be around her grandkids all the time, that's why we're doing this. We have invested a lot of money, a lot of time, um, we have been involved in the process, we've listened. So, um, your point saying that, yes, you know, we don't want a lot of growth, and we want to be able to determine, you know, what comes into town and how big it is. Right now, this campground moratorium is only affecting one group, or one applicant, just me. So it's, it feels targeted, um, it, it feels like it's just for our family. And if you really do want to bring something about that's going to address what you're saying, it has to be a wider span than just me or just us. So I just would like for you guys to take that into consideration as you consider, um, extending the moratorium.
All right. Anybody have any, um?
Jesse, has the planning board made any progress, um, uh, changing the ordinances? Has there been anything written down, any ideas submitted?
Uh, no, they held their first meeting last week, um, and went over some, um, thoughts, I guess. Um, I haven't seen the minutes from it yet, but there's been no definitive.
How come, like, this has been going on for a long time, like? And that's where I have a hard time extending anything, because there's been a lot of time to work this out, and I feel like we're just turning wheels now.
I know they had multiple meetings on the subject before the moratorium, um, and the planning board itself was, came up with no further changes, um, as you know, they presented changes in May that were approved at town meeting. Um, they asked for, um, a moratorium, for the selector to consider a moratorium in June, which you guys, um, replied that you had just, the town had just adopted changes in May, and if you, if the planning board felt there were more changes to be made, then they could work on those for the next several months, and you could send those changes to the voters in November. That's when nothing really happened as far as proposed changes. They did hold meetings in June and July, um, nothing came out of them. Then you received the citizens' petition in August to place it on the agenda for November. I believe a lot of, um, a lot of the people involved, the planning board, as well as perhaps members of CTR, thought that the hundred and eighty days was starting in November, giving them until May for the moratorium. However, the way it was worded to catch the August second date for pending applications, um, meant that it started August second regardless of its enactment date. So the hundred and eighty days runs from August second to January twenty ninth.
But didn't the CTR committee ask for that to be retroactive to August?
Yes.
So they should have known that it's, if it passed in November, your time actually started in August, because that's what they chose to do, right? Okay, just making sure I understand everything.
Uh, James?
Yeah, just want to make a quick point that they, they.
Yeah, just wanna make a quick point that they, they made a point where they're not being against business and not even against campgrounds per se. Um, and they're asking for more time on a moratorium. However, uh, the Lawson's appealed our twenty eighteen campground. So if they're not liking campgrounds in the town of Tremont, which was a very public appeal by the way, we are now about to roll into twenty twenty-two. So, couple of things. How much time are they gonna hold back someone who's followed every rule there is in this town, which I have, to start a business? How long can the town of Tremont and the residents expect us to hold on so we can get moving on with our business and pay bills and move our family back north and make very important decisions? I mean, we have done everything we can as a resident of this town to work with everybody. It's just a little strange to me to say, hey, we've got a moratorium here, we've asked for one, okay, we understand it. Oh, we couldn't organize effectively, so now we need more time, even though it just feels like to me from someone who is trying to operate a business, it's not being treated fairly and really that's all we're asking is a fair shake. So I know everybody sitting up there and everybody in this room has their own bills to pay, their own stuff to take care of. We're no different. We're just asking for a chance to get on with things and move forward. And they've already gotten one moratorium in. I don't see the point of extending it. That's my take. Thank you.
So it, it's been approved, but you can't get the permits until the moratorium's done, right?
Correct. It was unanimously passed by the planning board. I guess now I'm waiting for the moratorium so I can get my building permits and get started.
Right.
So.
Um.
And it's, you know.
I know, we know you're not making a decision about that today.
You know, we're just, we're just letting you know as an applicant and as someone who's in town, it's, it's, we feel like this thing is, you know, if you're pro-business and you say you're pro-business, but then you do other things and then you say, okay, well, who's against it? Well, we can't tell you exactly. It's just a group of people. We're not gonna tell you who. Okay, so we're over here up against a ghost apparently. So it feels a little bit targeted and I think we've been very fair. But as, as, as people who are trying to start a business in a, in a pandemic nonetheless, okay, we've, we've gotta get a fair shake from our town. That's, that's, that's just, that's just my ask.
So I know the ordinance is, they're gonna be changed eventually. I mean, I would think anyways. It seems like there's enough movement towards that. And I would hate to rush into it, but I also haven't seen any progress towards, um, changing those ordinances and this topic has gone on and on and on. It's been all year. Where's the progress? There's still no progress, so, yeah.
So the planning board is gonna have a public hearing and then we're gonna have a public hearing. Do we both have to have public hearings?
The only requirement is if the, um, select board extends the moratorium, you're required to do so after public hearing. So you would be required to have one if you're going to extend or think about extending it.
Okay, so if we're not sure about the extending it, we should have the public hearing anyway?
The, the opinion from the attorney is the safest option is to schedule a public hearing and make your decision after.
That's what I was just gonna say. Tonight, we're just, just here to decide whether to have, um, a public hearing or not.
Yes.
And that's just to hear people's input.
The suggestion in the memo for January eighteenth, um, the January, your January third meeting is too soon to properly advertise and you would need to do it before the expiration of January twenty ninth. That's me here.
If we have a public hearing, we're gonna get the same thing we've already had numerous times.
From the same people.
And the same thing the planning board's gonna get three days before our meeting.
Right.
Or whatever their date is.
I think.
But if we need to, then.
Yeah, Jesse, if, um, if James, our attorney, has recommended that we do so, then, um,
Okay.
that if he, if that's the way he feels and that's, you know, I feel that, in my own opinion, I think that we should have a public hearing.
Sounds, sounds like we should.
Any other questions?
Oh, sorry.
Um, I heard a mention January eighteenth, um, like I said before, it's, uh, you know, um, obviously you're gonna follow, um, your attorney and have a public hearing. That's what he suggests. We just wanna make sure that we can be here. Um, I'm also a registered nurse and because of the pandemic, I'm volunteering in, in, um, community. Um, and during Martin Luther King Week, we actually got into our services for the underserved, uh, for kids who can't get help care so that the eighteen wouldn't work for us. So we're just respectfully asking, um, that you try to plan a meeting of next Monday, um, so that we can attend.
Well, the, the date, Jesse, I'm trying to look at our, I can't see from here.
Could you attend on Zoom making? Nope.
Is Monday the planning board's option? Are you gonna do a Zoom, Jesse, or are you just gonna do it in person?
Except for the four.
I think it should be done in person.
That was our next topic.
Yeah, in person. So I, I mean, we'd like to be able to be here, um.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't see the one. That's the other one.
It's coming for the rest of the day.
Yeah, no, I know. So eighteenth, uh, when does it expire?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah, so that's still, if we did the twenty-fourth. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue, you know, myself with the twenty-fourth.
Is that a re-hold, twice special meeting?
Yeah, just hold a special meeting and just.
Uh, just a special meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, and just have that as the topic, that's it. We, we could just do that.
Probably.
Uh, yeah, simply without anyone.
Yes, no, I think it would be best to do that. The only thing that I'm wondering is how many people we are gonna have, if we're gonna have, um, a lot of people, we might want to do it on Zoom just because of the.
I think after Christmas, Zoom will be great because there's gonna be, we know how bad we are in this state now. And it's only gonna get worse. And so, and that gives these folks a chance if they're in Florida or here or anybody else. And, uh, it might be good that all the attorneys are in different places.
The only thing I'd be worried about is how, I mean, there's no way to predict how many, uh, people that we would have.
That's pretty high, yeah.
I think it's very hard to control a Zoom meeting that.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, that would be, that'd be just a responsibility, not mine.
There is, there is.
There is, there is, but.
We can only fit so many people.
I mean, if, our next meeting is the eighteenth, could we decide on the eighteenth whether the twenty-fourth will be Zoom or not? Could we do that?
Yeah, sure.
Or is that not enough time or whatever?
Um, you can, 'cause your remote participation policy allows you to just change the venue. I mean, we have to advertise it now. So you just have to post a change.
Okay.
The advertisement would go out for in this room.
Yeah.
And then you'd have to post a change to, um.
Okay.
It, it just didn't, I just don't think this room is even on the table in my opinion. I think we're gonna have enough people so that you would either have to, you'd have to find somewhere else, like the gym or you'd have to meet Zoom.
I said we'd do it at the gym.
I don't.
I think it'd be.
Well, I disagree with that. Every meeting in this town is Zoom except this one. And I think it's safe at this point to have it Zoom.
Um.
You get them up to decide.
Okay.
You do it, yeah. Yeah, we have some time to figure that out.
But what do you wanna do in the meantime? For, well, how do we set it up in the meantime before we decide?
Schedule it live and you can always change it.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
Yeah.
And, and check with the availability of the gym, maybe.
Yep. Can we just, when is our next meeting gonna be? Or the third? Okay, can we just put no, do we have time enough if we do it the twenty-fourth that we don't even, we don't even put a location for now and then find out all this other information by the third?
Yeah, you probably could wait. If you're gonna do it the twenty-fourth, you could probably, we could hold the advertisement until the third. No problem.
Long as you're good with that, Jesse, then.
'Cause we can get it in the paper on thirteen from the twentieth, so. Yeah.
So we are gonna hold a public hearing on the possible exen- extension on the twenty-fourth, not the eighteenth, right?
Correct.
Then you have to be decided.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on a possible extension of the twenty twenty-one campground moratorium audit ordinance for Monday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at five P M. Um, location to be decided.
Sounds good. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to schedule a public hearing on a possible extension of the twenty twenty-one campground moratorium ordinance for Monday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, five P M. The location is to be determined at this time. Will be decided on our January third meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Good. Moving on, the next thing is our FY twenty-three budget preparation. We have nonprofit organizations. Jesse, is there any?
So this year we received fourteen applications, um, the table of them is in your memo, um, showing last year's funding and this year's request. And I know several were coming tonight and several were not. Uh, but the first one on your list is the Southwest Harbor ambulance service, which I believe they are here.
Hi, I'm Andy Khan and I'm here with my colleague, Dave Bashmore, for presenting the ambulance service. Um, thanks for having us. Just like to say, you folks put in a lot of time and effort to consider these funding requests and not to mention all the other work we do on behalf of the town and we pray for it. Um, a small correction on the materials that we submitted. I noticed that it said we sent our annual appeal letter to every Tremont and MBI resident. It should have said every Tremont and Southwest Harbor. So the twenty twenty-one budget that we shared as part of our application shows a twen- uh, excuse me, a sixty-six thousand dollar projected shortfall. Um, things are not as bad as that sounds. Um, we made pretty conservative estimates for our billing revenue and for the amount we would receive from community members in response to our annual appeal. Um, in both areas, we've done better than our budget projections. Our new billing company that we began using a little more than a year ago, um, is working out well and we're doing better at receiving from individuals and insurance companies the amounts owed for our services. And the good people of Tremont and Southwest Harbor have responded very generously to our annual appeal in this time of COVID. In addition, uh, we did receive a forty-three thousand six hundred dollar P P P loan, uh, through the bailout, the stuff, which has been forgiven and we're now projecting to end the year in the black. Through November thirtieth, the ambulance service has responded to three hundred and eighty-one calls this year, a hundred and thirteen of them in the town of Tremont. Anecdotally, we received a couple of letters from particularly appreciative folks. One was a woman, from a woman whose friend had a seizure while they were eating at Thurston. And while our crew was administering to that person, her husband had a medical emergency. So we ended up with two patients there that we took care of. And then a second letter came from a woman from Gulesboro who's boat got blown off course and needed to be rescued from the water in Seal Cove in the dark. I'm happy to report that all those folks came through fine. Um, looking ahead to next year, COVID, of course, remains a wild card. All of our active EMS staff members are either vaccinated or have approved medical exemptions, but we're, of course, still using P P E and following strict safety protocols. Our biggest challenge for, uh, two thousand twenty-two is the need for a new ambulance because our present number two ambulance, which was built in two thousand eight, uh, is nearing the end of its reliable lifespan. Using money that we've been saving for this purpose, uh, plus in one particularly generous donation, we have more than half the cost of that new vehicle and we've gone ahead today with ordering it. So it'll be at least twelve months before we can take delivery. Um, when that happens, our present number one ambulance will become number two. It was a two thousand fifteen vehicle. We'll probably have to finance the rest of, with a bank loan and we've also applied for a federal grant for upgrading equipment uh, that we'll need in our current number one ambulance to be consistent with the new one. We're optimistic about that. Um, also for next year, we're looking at a cost of living increase of five point nine percent, um, for our per E M, E M Ts, which, as you know, is a good bit higher than it's been in recent years. Um, but we're working hard to manage our expenses and to keep our fundraising efforts strong and to seek other sources of income such as this payment ban. Uh, we're especially grateful to you and the voters of Tremont for approving our fifty-six thousand dollar allotment for this year. And we're hoping you'll continue your strong support of our service by approving the same amount for next year. We'd be happy to ask you any questions.
I have a question that's probably a little bit off topic from that, but, um, have you, how have you done with staffing? I just heard that you guys have had some, um, hard job trying to find people to fill, have the ambulance on call all the time and have had to rely on other towns to, to do so.
It's true that we have run into some difficulty there where, uh, our goal is to have a driver and an E M, an, uh, E M T on, on call twenty-four seven.
Yep.
Um, staffing has been a concern, but, um, that's where the, you know, mutual aid agreements with Northeast and Bar Harbor, it plays a big part. We've also done, uh, something with our, um, uh, someone can be from the seven P M to seven A M shift. If they live within ten minutes of the ambulance, they can be on call at home instead of in the office.
Yep.
And we, uh, gave them a, a lower pay grade for, you know, being able to be at home and that's helped a little bit 'cause we were having some trouble filling. It, it's improved, but it's not a hundred percent. Thank you for asking.
Uh, yeah, I would just like to say that in the past few months, we've had, um, there's three shifts during each day and we've had, um, any given month, probably four or five shifts that weren't covered in some way.
For the month, yep.
For the month. And those are, as Andy said, uh, covered by mutual aid.
Yep.
Uh, so we're doing better than we had in the past. We've got a very active and increasing, uh, number of people, but they come from Bangor and Brewer or some considerable distance. So it's hard to get our people in the office.
We have just recently added two new guys from the Coast Guard. So, so that's a big plus.
I had had some residents mention that to me and their concerns with it and just, you know, if there's any, they didn't know if it was a, a funding issue, if it's something that the town could, you know, help with or, or what it could be, salaries or, or such. So that's why I figured I'd ask one over here.
Well, yeah, thanks. We did actually just, we were working through our budget at our meeting last week and, uh, we have increased our recruitment and detention budget for next year, um, in hopes of bringing some more people in. And we, uh, we actually, uh, uh, are planning, it hasn't been decided yet, but one of the ideas we talked about was, uh, helping young high school students to fund a thousand dollar, uh, uh, E M T training program and, you know, and then have that amount of money be forgiven if they come to work for us afterward. So, uh, we're, we're looking into that.
Yeah, we're gonna. Yeah, that's a great idea.
It seems like, um, a lot of the kids who are coming up on graduation are looking for things to do and so we wanna jump on that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great idea. Any else have any questions or?
Nope, I like it.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, I make a motion to request the town manager to include fifty-six thousand dollars for the Southwest Harbor Tremont ambulance service in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request that the town manager includes fifty-six thousand dollars for the Southwest Harbor. for the Southwest Harbor Tremont Ambulance Service in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next we have Harbor House.
I'm here.
Is there any? Yes.
Hi, I'm Patrick Kasper, um, Agent Director. I've prepared many statements with a lot of what it is. I feel like we've been doing what we do for a long time. You guys probably would be interested in that. So, uh, I'm happy that I was going to answer any questions if you have any. Asking for the amount that we've been getting for the last few years.
No, I think they run a great program. Does a lot for the kids in this town.
Yeah.
I make a motion to request the town manager includes twenty-one thousand, was it one seventy, two seventy-five? For Harbor House in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, request the town manager to include twenty-one thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars for the Harbor House in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next is the Island Explorer. I know the Island Explorer, we didn't do anything for the last year, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Are the buses going to be running on this side of the island?
Yeah, that was my question.
They haven't for the last two years.
I know, right? That's the, the plan?
Probably to be determined like everything else is right now.
I believe, I wasn't here when you did the budget, um, I was just down here, but they, last year they did not submit a request because they knew they would not, like, serve Tremont.
Thank you. Correct. I'm pretty sure.
Maybe this is hopeful. We'll get buses.
Yeah, I know.
I'd love to hear.
I know, right? Right.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it. Cross your fingers and hope that they get reminded.
Right. Okay, um, I'll request that the town manager include Island Explorer in the amount of three thousand dollars in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include three thousand dollars for the Island Explorer in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next is Down East Horizons. Anybody here on behalf of Down East Horizons? Um, they have, um, asked for sixteen hundred dollars, which is the, the same as last year.
Uh, motion to request that the town manager includes Down East Horizons for the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget of sixteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include sixteen hundred dollars for Down East Horizons in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Now we have M D I Campfire Coalition. That's you again.
Same old thing, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we saw, um, last year, last winter, I think, um, as far as, because there was a lot of money that was flowing around, whether it was private subsidy or, um, increased amount of, um, unemployment compensation. And so now that, um, some of that is starting to dwindle, I, I'm assuming that we will see when we get back up to where it normally is. So, um, last year it was, uh, just over three thousand dollars that, um, was used to provide community assistance to Tremont residents. My guess is it'll be closer, you know, to the four or five thousand like it's been in the past.
I make a motion to request the town manager includes three thousand dollars for the Campfire Coalition in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include three thousand dollars for M D I Campfire Coalition in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion?
I was kidding, sorry.
All those in favor?
Me!
You're jumping the gun.
Me! I was looking at, sorry. I'll pay attention.
Next is Down East Community Partners.
That's not me.
That's not you. Last year, um, they had asked for, uh, two thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Uh, this year it's two thousand five hundred dollars.
I motion that the town manager includes two thousand five hundred dollars for the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget.
Second.
For the Down East Community Partners, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include two thousand five hundred dollars for the, uh, Down East Community Partners in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Didn't jump the gun on that?
No, no, I waited, I waited. I'll wait my turn.
All right. Next is the Tremont Historical Society. Let's see. Hello, how are you?
Two of us.
Yep.
Patrick Kelly, I'm the president of the Tremont Historical Society. McNeese, Dominic, that be our treasurer. So we have the Historical Society, maintain the museum, so the Richardson Museum down by the waterfront. We also run a number of public, uh, discussions and, uh, speeches and lectures that, um, we actually have in here. We're also working to get more collections and get more online, including things like our website and Facebook and even Instagram, uh, this last year. So we are asking for thirty-five hundred dollars, which is the same as we had the last couple of years. And we thank the town for your support.
Okay, thank you.
You can, you can get your Tremont Historical Society twenty-two calendar.
Did you bring enough for everyone, John?
Yeah, I do. I got a whole bunch of them there.
Turn the treble's bar.
We also are, we also are putting a lot of emphasis in helping to get Ruth Moore books, uh, which of course are all over the bookstores out, that are reprinted. Uh, we al- we always get them right away when a new, new one of the books is reprinted because people come to us because they associate us with Ruth naturally in the history. So, uh, we're beginning to do a little bit more business, which is, which is part of our in- income stream, some, some portion of the, of the sale of books.
That's great.
I motion request that the town manager includes, how much? Thirty-five hundred dollars to the Tremont Historical Society in the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include thirty-five hundred dollars for the Tremont Historical Society in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget.
Can everybody buy a calendar?
There's a sale upstairs all the time.
What about in the trunk? How much are they in the trunk? Is there any discussion?
I'm watching. Give it back. Now I can vote.
Yeah. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Next we have the Hospice Volunteers of Hancock County. Last year they had, um, asked for one thousand dollars and it's the same this year.
I motion to request that the town manager includes one thousand dollars for the Hospice Volunteers of Hancock County in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include one thousand dollars for the hospice of Hancock County in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next we have Island Connections. And they are asking for fifteen hundred dollars, which is the same as last year.
I motion that to request the town manager includes fifteen hundred dollars. Is that what it was? Fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
Uh, for the Island Connections in the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include fifteen hundred dollars for Island Connections, uh, in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next is the Bar Harbor Food Pantry. Uh, they have requested twenty-five hundred dollars, which is the same as last year.
Says two point five dollars.
No, that's, uh, the next one down.
Oh, the next one down, yeah, sure.
We're one above that.
I'm sure that's twenty-five hundred too.
Yeah.
Uh, a motion to request that the town manager includes twenty-five hundred dollars for the Bar Harbor Food Pantry in the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the town manager to include twenty-five hundred dollars for the Bar Harbor Food Pantry in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next is your two point five, Eric. Uh, the Island Housing Trust. Yes.
So it's not two point five?
Yeah.
We just wanted to say thank you for your, you know, support in previous years. Your continued support, um, allows us to continue the whole program and would demonstrate by the town your commitment to your housing. And we're ready, Mr.
Thank you.
Can't make you read them all, guys.
Good for you, Eric.
I have a motion to request that the town manager includes twenty-five hundred dollars to the Island House Trust in the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager include twenty-five hundred dollars for the, uh, the Island Housing Trust? Yeah, House Trust, sorry, in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next is Climate Thrive.
And in the interest of full disclosure, I'm chairman of the board of Climate to Thrive. I get no compensation for it and I actually donate more personally than we're asking the town. Just so that's out in the open.
And the handout on my desk was, um, showing that I couldn't make it tonight, but she wanted me to provide that handout to you guys.
Okay. There are questions on. I can answer them.
Um, last year they had, um, asked for five hundred dollars and this year is exactly the same.
Go, Eric.
I thought Kevin was going to read this one.
Ken, if you'd like, you won't take that one.
I motion to request the town manager includes five hundred dollars to the Climate to Thrive in the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include, uh, five hundred dollars for the Climate Thrive Organization in the proposed F Y twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Next is the West Side Food Pantry.
I'm Danielle Malin. I've been involved with the West Side Food Pantry for about nineteen years now, I think. And the backpack program that takes care of the penic and, um, Tremont school kids for the weekend food program, which gets some funding through the West Side Food Pantry. Uh, I'm a resident of Tremont. Dean Henry is the director of the West Side Food Pantry and lives in Southwest Harbor, but I'm sure you'll let him speak because he's got the paper with all the.
Well, this is our first time to, uh, to approach the select committee of, uh, Town of Tremont for funding. That doesn't mean, however, in thirty-one years we've been in, in operation that we haven't been in Tremont. Thirty-eight percent of our, uh, voucher dollars, matter of fact, uh, this may be some, something new. We are a different kind of food pantry. We distribute based on a schedule to households in the three towns of Southwest Harbor, Tremont and Mount Desert. Food vouchers that are redeemable at local markets, Southwest Food Mart, Hanson's, Outpost and, uh, Doc Store. And those, um, uh, vouchers help people with food security. And we were started as a, uh, six months of year operation because of the unique situation on this side of the island where, um, seasonal employment is a, is a, i- is a reality. And, uh, we seek to help people with food, uh, security during the winter months when, uh, sometimes, um, income is shorter or, or less rather and, um, needed for things like, uh, heat. And, um, so we always, uh, uh, we always like to keep people having to make the, the choice between heating or eating. And, uh, that's part of, uh, our philosophy and our mission. So we've been in Tremont all these thirty-one years, uh, supporting, helping our neighbors with that, uh, food security. And about, as I say, about thirty-eight percent of our, um, neighbors that we serve live in Tremont. So on a monthly basis, about, we serve about two hundred households per month. Uh, that thirty-eight percent, it was about, uh, seventy-eight, uh, households in the city, or in the town of Tremont receive us, work for us. And that's, uh, around a hundred and three adults and thirty-two children each month. Uh, now during the pandemic, we have, uh, increased our operations to eight months a year, trying to work into the shoulder seasons and, uh, be of help there too. So, uh, that's the kind of work we do. And, um, again, we would appreciate, uh, the town's support of that work. We anticipate that our budget issue will be around a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, worth of voucher that will be distributed during those eight months.
The vouchers allow people to buy what they need, like toilet paper and soap and that sort of thing, rather than a traditional food pantry that has like canned goods and that sort of thing on the shelf. But people aren't, are only given what is there on the shelf. This is kind of a, a way of people to feel a little more, um, less, I don't know, what's the word? Uh, less stigmatized by not being able to choose what they think they need. And, you know, there's, there are a lot of people that go to the food mart and, and they are really good about watching, you know, so people cannot spend their vouchers on cigarettes and that sort of thing.
So they're aware locally that there are restrictions on what they can do with the function?
Well, there are restrictions. It's for what you can buy at a grocery store essentially now. Not, no alcohol, gasoline or, uh,
Firearms.
No alcohol, gasoline or, uh,
Cigarettes.
Cigarettes.
Cigarettes, alcohol or gasoline.
And your staff's entirely volunteer?
Oh, yes, entirely. What is the average amount that you give to a household?
Well, a household of, um, of, oh, that's a, um, I had a household, uh, receive sixty dollars a month. They had second adult in the household. A household is comprised with two adults and, and what number of children you have. So it's, uh, thirty dollars for the second adult. So for, uh, a household with two adults, that's ninety dollars. I'm sorry, forty dollars, that's a hundred dollars a month. Each additional child is thirty dollars and depending on how many children you have or actually what is in there. So that comes out to about a family or a household of four is around, um, around a hundred and sixty, seventy dollars a month.
Which doesn't go very far.
I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't take care of everything, but it's, uh,
You also deliver food to them?
No, no. We're, we strictly deal with vouchers.
Okay.
So they, they, they buy what they want and need.
But they, some people do use the Bar Harbor Food Pantry. And Bar Harbor Food Pantry has set up a shelf at the Common Good. Yeah, because we have the Common Good too. Yeah, because we have the Common Good too, but that, that's the actual food, yeah. Because if people leave things in the vacuum at Saint John, we usually take them over to Common Good because we don't have any space to store and distribute. Very good.
Sounds like a very worthwhile program to me.
Thank you.
Eighty-five percent of our support comes from individual dollars. I mean, last year we were a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. People have been very generous during the pandemic particularly. It's been a big help. And as Diane mentioned, we're uh also support heavily the uh the backpack program which serves Tremont and uh Penitent Schools.
Right.
Those uh are where each Friday, well, each, one day a week, uh uh food is sent home to children who can prepare that food on their own if they have to.
Right, because that's the whole premise is that they may be in a household where there's no adult to cook for them for the weekend, so it's easy soup with mac and snacks and. Fruits and vegetables, I'm a fruit and vegetable queen.
Any questions? For operations? No, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I make a motion to request the town manager to include twenty-five hundred dollars for the West Side Food Pantry in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second. Been moved and seconded to request the town manager include twenty-five hundred dollars for the West Side Food Pantry in the proposed FY twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next is Open Table MDI. This is a new application. Correct? It is uh three thousand dollars. You guys could have a chance to look, look through the packet there.
Yes, they deliver meals?
Yep.
Do they also do like a sit-down dinner or did I?
They use, as they, they use.
Used to, okay, uh, okay, gotcha.
There's no one here, no one here from here.
They do deliver.
They do, okay, nobody's here for?
No, and I'm not really involved, but I just know because of the food pantry and the children's program.
Yeah.
That they do deliver and it's a new, it's a new program that's growing and if it wasn't for the pandemic, they wouldn't have to sit down there. It's a really, it's a really nice program.
They started out cooking and serving at the church next door to real pizza.
Oh, okay.
And anybody could come and have a meal was the one.
Actually, they started at Holy Redeemer.
Okay.
Years before going over to the Common Good. And now they kind of now they're on it.
Yeah.
They're on uh Cottage Street, you know, and they used to have people come and eat, but because of the pandemic, how they.
So now they deliver.
Do they uh prepare the food right there and stuff?
And that's all volunteer.
That's great.
No, I don't think it's all volunteer, they get, they get paid robustly.
Oh, well, I mean, I mean.
The drivers.
You'll get, their current, is that yearly funding, I believe, on the second, that would be their, their funding that they receive, yeah.
Probably budget, was it?
Yes, so two pages.
It's probably the worst of all programs.
Yeah. If I knew, no one was gonna be here, I would ask Trish's parents if they do a lot with that church, the other church, yeah.
Love to have them here to answer questions, but what the heck. I make a motion to request the town manager includes three thousand dollars.
Yep.
For the, for Open Table MDI in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include three thousand dollars for Open Table MDI in the proposed FY twenty-three budget.
Can. Yeah, I mean, I was just wondering, it's just more than all the other pantries that we give to, I didn't know, maybe we should make it consistent, but. It doesn't matter to me, I don't mind helping people either way.
Twenty-five, twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred, you're more comfortable with?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with it anyways, but you know, just throwing that out there, what do you guys think?
Yeah, so it's all, I understand what you mean Eric, so that everyone is, yeah.
Yeah.
Make them consistent.
Okay, I'll, I'll uh reword my motion.
Should we vote down his motion and then make a new one or just rescind, vote it down?
Vote it down.
Okay, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Yeah, I know.
Okay, I'll try it again. I make a motion to request the town's man, town manager includes twenty-five hundred dollars for the uh Open Open Table MDI in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include twenty-five hundred dollars for Open Table MDI in the proposed FY twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I think that's a good idea, Eric.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
Keep them all the same.
Yeah. Alright, I think that's it, isn't it Jesse?
Jesse, no, can't speak, what?
Alright, next thing.
Okay, sorry.
No, okay, I didn't know, I missed something, that's all. Alright, next thing we have um parking lot permitting. And I think I'm the one that might have, that I mentioned the the uh Reed Store parking lot.
Yeah, I think that's a lot better than that is true.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Back when we had uh, we all decided, I think Eric was the only one that wasn't on the board, to put um rocks around the the area around the Reed Store lot down there. Uh, because there were some issues with people parking in the road and, you know, illegal park stuff being towed. And um so we put the rocks around it and then we've talked about improving the law in the past, you know, grading it, doing whatever.
And we did some.
Yeah, and they did do, yeah, they did do some, but um I just wanna throw out the idea that, you know, to bring it up, like before you go as far as paving it and doing a nice, you know, it would be nice if it if it was a nice paved lot, but um the, most of the people that use it are overflow from the ferry terminal, Gott's Island, stuff like that. What if they could buy a yearly pass at the town office to park there? Whatever the dollar amount, I don't, you know, I didn't have anything, you know, in my head on that, but just to um reserve money, start putting away money um to do something with the law, fix it up, maintain it, basically pay to to keep it there.
Yeah, and the reason why they use it is because it's free now, they don't wanna pay for the ferry terminal.
Yeah.
How much is the ferry terminal? Because they got plenty of room up top.
Yeah.
Most of the time, but you know, obviously we don't wanna.
Yeah, and in fact, I think probably it's not that much of a lot, it's it's more French, you know, French Borough and so on.
Yeah, no, I think that, um, and you're gonna see people park there, maybe summer residents might wanna park there as well and if they do, they could buy a permit pass even if they wanna park there for two weeks in the summer, you know, it's not looking to make it a crazy amount of money, just something to start earning some revenue to.
Yeah, there are a lot of vehicles over there long-term.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, several weeks.
Yeah.
Um, and we're not using all that parking lot or all the town on space has parking lot either.
Yeah, we have the, that's the thing, we have the room to expand that way down, so.
Yeah.
If it started making some revenue, then we could, you know, have someone come back, move the rocks, they go clear down to that rate, basically to that next house Eric, there, you know, the.
Yeah.
Where the, they had gift shops or whatever in there before.
What's the uh, what's a like a per per weekly rate that would be fair and then, you know, obviously project that out for a year and that would be our annual?
I don't know if you get fifty, I don't know if you get fifty-two weeks a year out of it.
Well, right.
Or season, yeah.
But is it an annual permit or is it a weekly permit? So you, you know, if it's an annual permit, then just kinda project it out that way.
I think it'd be a little tough to enforce a weekly permit, don't you?
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
I think it'd be hard, also if you start mixing the permit types to.
Yeah.
Calculate how many can issue.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
At different lengths of time.
I mean, how many cars do you think fit in there? I mean, I know.
You'd have to measure it and.
Buy theirs more, much as anybody does, but it must be thirty or more.
I would say having.
Yeah, probably around there.
Eight and a half by nineteen, so with the parking space in town, so.
Yeah, might justify paying to put some parking lines in there too and, yeah, maybe maximize it because they kinda do park health of skeleton.
Yep.
What do you guys think, like, what I always think it's like fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars a year, just something, just a one-shot fee, I don't care if you use it for a month, for six months if you have.
Yeah, you have to.
What's that?
That's not the number I had.
Oh, okay. You have the sticker in your window, then you're all set, you park there anytime you want, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Because they stay for long-term there, like it's weeks on end or days on end or some.
I think you see a lot of outer island, you see a lot of like French Borough and some overflow parking like Eric said from the, from the ferry terminal and they'll stay there for in the summertime, a month, you know.
Okay.
And even like probably high school kids and stuff that leave a vehicle over here, you know, and drive to school and stuff like that.
To school or something.
I don't know yet, but.
I was just saying, saying that there are people who have two vehicles, they have one on the island, LaSwans Island especially because there's so many more. And and one on this side, so they come back and forth as passengers without paying the ferry for their vehicle. And they get in the vehicle, go shopping, come back and carry what they can aboard the boat, you know, do they?
Yeah.
That's a limitation, but my son, as a matter of fact, did that this summer and he parked his second vehicle up there for about six weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And that was nice because it did, at the ferry terminal in the summertime, that would cost you a a good deal.
Oh, yeah, that downtime traveling.
What does it cost to park? Does it cost to park at the ferry terminal?
I don't know what the ferry terminal's rates are, I know they are high in the summer.
Yeah.
You know.
And maybe it'd be something we only permitted se, you know, seasonally, like in the winter, right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, if you bought a permit, it would go from May first to to, you know, November first, sorry, you know, any, I'm just throwing out numbers, but um.
Do we plow that in the winter?
Used to.
I know, I've driven past it a thousand times, but I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, it used to be plowed all the time, I think it's.
Before the rocks though.
Yeah, well, I think they still push up with the rocks.
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to think if last winter they did though or not.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know. Didn't plow much last winter.
No, but either way, it, if you did it the seasonal, so it would go, so you wouldn't have to plow it if you didn't want to.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Six or.
So, so were you thinking like marine barge rates for parking?
No, I was thinking a hundred bucks per year, but.
Well, I was thinking something like that too, I think a hundred bucks is pretty reasonable.
I thought that was fairly fair, but you know, we gotta consider if it's gonna be only six months, you know, maybe it should be seventy-five, I don't know. It's better to start high and, I don't know. What do you think, Eddie?
I don't know.
It's hard to charge, you know, you know, kids and stuff that use it.
I know.
I suppose having a differentiated rate, you know, for residents, perhaps Gott's Island, which is, which is Tremont taxpayers and other towns. Would that, would that be something that's maybe like fifty dollars for.
A resident and.
Pro, taxpayer, they're probably not residents, but someone that.
Right.
Yeah.
Gott's Island and a hundred for non-resident taxpayers maybe, I don't know how you define that, but I think you all know what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds good to me.
No, I think that's a good idea and that way, because I agree, I'm, when I thought of it, I didn't wanna, you know, I don't wanna charge taxpayers anymore, but in order to improve the law or to have, you know, to keep the law up and everything else, you gotta raise a little bit of money, so.
Or just even if you expand it with gravel, there's gonna be some expenses.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, split it, whatever the dollar amount, just half for residents and.
Sounds good to me. What's the season, what's the dates? Or Jesse, you can figure that out on your own or?
It's up to you guys, I mean, if I can.
April first, it shouldn't be, it's not in April, should it? I hope not.
Till like November first or October or?
Yeah, yeah.
What's, what's six months? So if you did it six months or a whole time?
That's through September, April first through the end of September would be six months.
When is?
I think I'd go May, I mean, no one's here in April, I mean, if they're here in April, the year round.
May first to November first.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Let me take a stab at a motion here, see if I make it make sense. Make a motion to authorize the town manager to um add a fee for parking seasonally, May first through November first at the Reed's Lot with fees being one hundred dollars for non-resident taxpayers or non-taxpayers in Tremont and fifty dollars for residents or Tremont property owners.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to um draft up a memo or whatever, to, to charge a seasonal uh permit parking at the Reed Lot from starting May first and ending November first of each year with the fee being one hundred dollars for non-taxpaying resident and the uh fifty dollars being for a taxpaying.
Let's, let's say non-residents instead of non-taxpaying residents.
Okay, non-residents.
Yeah, it's just.
Versus, okay.
Yeah, I think that's good enough. And to put up a sign.
Can we send letters to like French Borough and Swans Island or just, I, you know, I don't want somebody to be like, oh, now, now I'm in trouble, I can't park here, like, can we? I don't know, maybe they can put something in their post offices or, I mean, we can put on websites and stuff, but.
Those little stickers that Justin hands out down the town dock are perfect, they're just little stickers you put in your window and once you have one of those, you're styling the year, so.
So.
And it's annually, right? We, we do it every year.
Yep.
Who, on the other hand, you gotta, someone's gotta go through there every now and then, I mean, whose job is that too?
I think we'll task the sheriff's office with it, um, I reviewed, I talked about parking in the back of summer and they will enforce any of our parking requirements in our policies, so.
Yeah, it makes sense, they need to do something.
At least two or three of us are through there fairly often getting mail or whatever too, we can just take a, you know, just kinda wander through and take a look and if sheriff needs to be nudged, we could always do that.
Alright, now it's any discussion, I think we just had discussion. All those in favor? Alright, next is the B schedule. Do you wanna um kinda update us on what's new, what's, what's changed?
So in your packet, there is um the current B schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Which is in black and white and says twenty-two-one-five-seventeen at the top. And then a proposed updated one, let's see, on the yellow, um, with uh twenty-two-one-twenty at the top. Um, I have proposed that you look at changes to building permit fees and site plan fees, subdivision fees, appeals board and internal planning. Um, when I started back in twenty-twenty as a code officer, I felt that we probably could increase the um building fees, the square footage fees, um, the fees you see in my proposal are the same fees in Southwest Harvard. I don't see any difference, so I, any reason why Tremont would be less. Um, at the time when I mentioned it, um, the primary manager said, well, is anybody complaining that the fees are too low? Um, and in fact, over the last year or so, I've heard from many people, not necessarily complaining, but saying that, geez, you could charge, you could be charging a lot more than that. Um, and people wouldn't even notice, um, and so I looked at area fees, looked at Bar Harbor's fees, Mountain Desert's fees, Southwest, Camden. The site plan review fee um is currently a hundred dollars. That fee does not even cover the planning board members um getting paid for one meeting, one alone, multiple meetings. Um, not that two hundred and fifty will either, but it's an improvement of over a hundred. Um, comparatively, just for your reference, um. Site plan review fees in Bar Harbor for the same thing are twenty-two hundred dollars compared to modern, current one hundred dollars. Um, not saying that we should do the same as Bar Harbor, but there's obviously a huge difference between the two um fees. And the appeals board as well, um, right now, there's actually a, um, if not on your B schedule right now. There's, um, it shows up in the ordinance as fifty dollars for an appeal and shows up on the application as a hundred dollars for an appeal. Um, so either way, that needs to be added to the schedule, um, but most towns are charging well north of three hundred. Um, for an appeal, as high as a seven hundred for an appeal for commercial project. Um, I have increased um or changed the public hearing costs. Currently, it just says cost of the public hearing, um, it's become increasingly difficult to pin that cost down. It changes often and it creates a delay in processing that payment, having to wait to confirm the amount in the newspaper. Uh, it's currently running around a hundred and twenty dollars for a public hearing and, um. So I proposed just a flat one fifty, um, that's what several towns um do. And lastly, when I was going over the fees with John, the code officer, just to see if he had any input or thoughts. Um, he said that Tremont is one of very few towns still charging the minimum fee of ten dollars for fixtures for plumbing. Um, but we're still charging at least fifteen per fixture now, um, so I increased that at least suggestion. And just trying to hook into any questions or if you wanna change any of that.
I saw the uh earth moving ten to a hundred yards, because currently you don't need to have a permit for moving up to a hundred yards of fill.
Yes. Correct.
If you had fifty and seventy-five dollars on this, does that mean you would have to get a permit now to do that or just pay a fee or?
That is if you're in the shoreline for the flood plan, so it's going currently is twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars.
Yep, Jeff, yep, yep, thanks.
It all looks good to me, except I think, I think part of the problem is the site plan review is getting used too often. But I think the fee should be quite a bit higher than that because it costs the town a ton of money every time we get one of those. I mean, it's been insane what the legal bills have been lately on site plan reviews. And I also think the appeal award fee should be higher than that, I think we should at least be breaking even on some of these. Um, and the site review one particularly, I think twenty-two hundred dollars in Bar Harbor is kind of high, but I think five hundred dollars wouldn't be unreasonable. As long as it's not being applied, you know, universally to every commercial permit that shows up.
The only issue, I agree with you, the only issue that I see from my own experience as well is the site plan review is often kicked in now for a simple project such as. If you have a commercial business and you wanna do some ditching or um just a little fill down there, you have to go through this whole process, um, it's, that's the only. If you never got all your notes, you didn't have to, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, well, why don't we shoot for getting it somewhere in that range after it gets modified maybe, hopefully some of this zoning. You know, what's going on with the land use ordinance will sort some of that out, so I'm I'm fine with keeping it there, but in reality, for a real site plan review.
Oh, yeah.
It should be more money, yeah.
Yeah.
It it just shouldn't be applied to everything. And I do think the appeals board fee should be higher, at least two fifty.
Yeah.
Maybe more than that.
Do you have the numbers for like Southwest Harbor or something on hand or?
For all of it or?
Or just some of these maybe, just so we had?
So um Southwest is the same as what I've suggested, other than the site plan, they are what our current one is, a hundred. Um, and their board of appeals is one fifty, I believe in Southwest. Um, Bar Harbor's board of appeals is, if it's single family or commercial development under a million dollars, the appeal is three hundred and ninety. If it's a commercial development over a million dollars in cost, it's seven seventy-eight. Um, and their site plan is for the small end, eleven forty-one, for the large end, twenty-two eighty-two. Um, the appeals board fee in Camden is two twenty-five. Um, and their site plan subdivision, I have to check, I think they were more than what I have here. Um, Mountain Desert is um tricky because obviously the town of Mountain Desert does not normally need funds. So their planning board fee is twenty-five dollars for it in Mountain Desert.
They have a little more F one tax base than we do. Um, the other thing I'd like to see some way, and I don't think we can put it in the fee schedule, or if we can, I'm not quite sure how to do it, but I think on some of these things, when. Everyone in the world shows up with an attorney at these hearings and we're forced to basically get one because of that, we, the town shouldn't be eating the cost of that. I think there should be some way to recover that in the fee or permitting structure. I mean, we've had, our bills have been over ten thousand dollars, I think, on one of these projects so far in the last year, that's, I think that's a lot to ask the taxpayers to cover.
Uh, more than that, I think, too.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah.
So I would say um that change, I believe, would have to be in the ordinance, um. And I was just gonna pull, it is in our subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, when you're charging a fee of two hundred and twenty-five dollars and attorneys, you know, get one per hour, if you need to have a consultation, yeah, then there you go.
Seems we're, uh, we run an awful lot of funding for these lawyer-to-lawyer battles, I know the last. I mean, it was planning board, it was, uh, whatever, one of the last meetings I saw a part of, I counted four attorneys. And that there wasn't anyone.
Not even ours, really, not even.
I mean, it's getting to be a little out of control.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, yeah.
And I I think expecting the taxpayers to fund that to be able to.
I don't see it right now, but basically it's built into the subdivision ordinance that if um if an application. Requires the town to get an attorney to interpret something in relationship to that application. The applicant is responsible for reimbursing the town's attorney case. That's actually the amount, um, the case with the Morris Holdings that you guys had to write off or chose to write off.
That was attorney's fees.
That was attorney's fees that the town paid to in that subdivision, um.
Maybe that's something we should request the planning board to work on in the near future or something, so it can be on the next town meeting vote. To recoup some of those costs that we seem to be forced into absorbing.
Yeah, we don't really have a choice.
Yeah, so maybe I'll make a motion to that effect when we get through this. Um, that and and maybe uh modifying the site plan review requirements or the requirements to qualify for site plan review. Everyone's comfortable, then I'll make a motion for that after this. Um, so I guess the only, I guess I'm okay with the fees personally, I still think the appeals board probably should be two fifty, but. I mean, that's, I'll agree with what everyone else wants on that.
And I agree with the site plan review going up as soon as some of, as soon as it's ironed out, so it doesn't apply to to small stuff that people do, if it's a large project, then that's.
Yeah, well, that would be.
I know that was his intent from from day one as you mentioned before, but.
Those those site plans are costing the town an awful lot of time, energy and money and. We got one that really belongs there, that should be part of the fees. I make a motion to adopt and sign the uh December twenty, twenty twenty-one version of the department, the schedule of department fees. With the modification of changing the appeals board fee to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt and sign the December twentieth, twenty twenty-one version of the schedule of department fee. Um, with the only change being to the appeals board and that being changed to two hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Did you wanna make another motion now, Kevin, or do you wanna wait until uh?
Yeah, that's okay, um, I make a motion to request the town manager, ask the planning board to look into modifying. The requirements to fall under the site plan review to make it so. Um, smaller projects don't fall on, fall under that and what was the other thing? Totally lost it already.
Attorney.
Attorney.
Oh, and to try to figure some structure to make uh site plan. Fee scheduled responsible for covering town's attorneys, if the town is required to have them or if not required, feels the need to have them. Guess that makes sense.
Second, what he said.
Hopefully.
Definitely get pretty.
To, yeah, have the town manager ask, uh, you wanted to ask the.
Ask the planning board to look into, can I repeat it?
Yeah, sure, no, that that sounds great, Kevin.
Uh, to ask the towning board, the planning board to look into um modifying the site plan review requirements. The requirements to fall under site plan review and to look into modifying the fee structure to what the land use ordinance structure. To allow the town to recoup attorney's fees when it's felt they're necessary to represent the town on those proceedings.
Thank you.
I guess that sounds different than the first time, I think it's a little.
Sounds good.
No, yeah.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
That was ugly.
All right, next we have skid steer loader purchase. I'll let you, um, what do you got, Jessica?
Okay, so towards the end of um FY twenty-one, there was some conversation, um, I know I was a part of with Chris and Troy. I believe the select board touched on it a bit, um, about possibly acquiring a skid steer type of loader in the future for public works. Uh, the thought would be that it could be used to plow the sidewalks, which we currently have an issue of getting filed to return with what we have. And hopefully to acquire a street sweeper attachment so that the town could sweep its own um floss, that's something we currently contract out for. Um, every spring, among its regular uses as a skid steer. Um, Troy recently brought it up coming into winter with the sidewalk issue um facing us. Uh, you currently have just over fifty-three thousand in the equipment reserve account, which is um for town equipment. It's separate from the truck um reserve. Um, so talking to Troy, I suggested, you know, we could look at, if you wanted to, we could look at also used options as well as getting bids for. Um, new ones and so put it on your agenda to see how you're all feeling about looking to purchasing one and if that's something you want me to pursue.
What's the ballpark on a new one?
A new one that ranges from forty to sixty, I haven't bid them out, but there may be some that are in the. High thirties if we're lucky, but for, I think there's more of six to twelve, but.
Attachments and heated gabs and all that stuff are all, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
They're expensive.
I question how much use we get from one, I know the streets sweeping we contract out, but it's been pretty reasonably priced, if I remember.
What was the price on the street sweeping this year?
Uh, I wanna say eighteen hundred.
That's a lot of years of street sweeping.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. And I mean.
The only thing I think that when this originally came up before was the sidewalk plowing and we were looking at, um, I think we talked about. Yeah, we talked about leasing one, didn't we? And I think Chris looked into it at the lease price of for a season and it was outrageous, the the lea-, you know, just to to. To see what we wanted.
I also looked into renting, um, because Troy asked me about that, uh, it was around eight thousand dollars to rent one.
Yeah. Yeah.
And how many feet of sidewalk do we have?
That was my next question.
It's um.
It's not much.
Probably one or mile, a bit, because we acqui-, I guess from what I've been told, we acquired the responsibility of the section by McCaffrey.
Well, I I think a mile's probably being really generous.
Yeah.
I'd say probably around half of that, I had to guess.
And how much of it can the plows not do because of mailboxes?
Um, I looked today, because we we had somebody come in today asking why they weren't done, um, with this lot storm. And so Troy went out, um, I guess he's attempted it with the case before, but the case is really kind of large, um.
Yeah, I wouldn't use that.
And with this storm, um, with the ground not being frozen, that's wasn't a reliable option, um, so he did go out with the plow truck with the wing. Um, there's, I wouldn't say half, probably thirty to forty percent that you can't get because of. The distance between two mailboxes is too short to.
But you can wing the rest.
What about the, uh, remember that old, I call it a lawnmower, lawnmower tractor, whatever we had here, didn't we just get rid of that, the?
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, that Kubota, yeah, if you had something like that with a stonewall or fire attachment of some sorts, you know.
That's that's what I was kind of leaning towards, and that's that's a lot more versatile, I think, than a skid steer.
I did see, um, when I was on looking at them, they also do make, um, all those attachments also go on like a. Like a gator, um.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Yeah, I mean, you could you could plow the sidewalks with a gator. And I mean, you're talking probably less, well less than half the price of a skid steer, it would sound.
Might surprise you now, Kevin. Obviously, uh.
I don't know.
Those, yeah, those little mini articulating loaders that they have, I know Bobcat makes one. Um, and they have all kinds of attachments for those too, I've seen, they're like, they're small, like really compact ones. Um, that I think would do the same type of thing, you could throw a bunch of attachments on it, I think you're probably, I don't know, but now, but in the thirties, you know, thousand dollar range and.
Yeah, I just, I I, my gut feeling is you could probably get a more versatile piece of equipment than a skid steer to do the same job, especially if you're only plowing maybe half a mile sidewalks, huh?
Get a four wheeler with a plow. But yeah, it's all oversized lawnmower tractor with a bucket or attachments or whatever.
Yeah, I'd guess.
What if you called, what if you called up someplace like um like Bobcat and just said, hey, this is what we're looking to do, but we want a versatile, you know, we want something. And have them throw you something, you know, an idea, maybe they have a, they know more than we do about it, something they might have, whatever, for a piece of, call John Deere, do the same. And uh, it'd see, they could say, we could do a gator, we could do a skid steer or this, that or the other.
Yeah, I'd hate to spend sixty thousand dollars on something that's gonna save us eighteen hundred dollars and fly half a mile sidewalks. Yeah, I'd hate to spend sixty thousand dollars on something that's gonna save us eighteen hundred dollars and plow half a mile sidewalks three times a week. I mean, to me, that seems like that's not the best use of money.
I don't think we should use up all that budget either, you know, the reserve, cause, you know, wrenches are important too.
But we do have to maintain those sidewalks. That was part of the deal when they put in those sidewalks, is we maintain them. And, uh, kids walk into our schools, we need to make sure they're maintained, so I do see where, like, we absolutely have to find a way to maintain them. Yeah, kind of whatever it may be.
Yeah, and we talking like heated cap or just a closed end cap or, you know, cause that makes a big difference.
It has to be heated if it's closed in because.
You just walk up the window.
It's just wrong.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think if you, even before you got bids, Jesse, what if you just called and got a few ideas and then came back at our next meeting? And then we could all say, hey, maybe this is just ballpark, you don't get priced just, you know, are we talking twenty thousand or seventy thousand? Like, wait, really, really ballpark prices.
I don't know what a street sweeper attachment would cost for one of those, but I mean, at eighteen hundred dollars a year, you don't have to maintain it. I don't think I'd spend ten thousand dollars on an attachment.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think it would.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but I mean, I'm just, some of that contracting, some of that out is not a bad idea.
Do we have something that will plow the sidewalks though, now if we had to?
No.
No, we don't have anything, right, cause there's a part.
So we gotta kind of make a move on it.
You really make a.
You gotta get something to eat there, even a snowball or with a, you know, I mean, you need something, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah, yeah.
Do I have a deal for you?
We don't have enough extension cords to run your electric snowball.
I get a battery cord, and it's good for about fifty feet.
All right, so do you want a motion or just let the, wait until next meeting to?
No.
I think it's perfect, options for your next meeting.
Yep.
That'd be good.
All right, next we have the town manager's report.
All right. So major emphasis in the last two weeks has been, uh, working on the FY twenty-three budget preparations and bringing the new code enforcement officer up to date on projects and meetings and getting him situated and set up. Um, I have been busy with researching premium pay with the APRA funds that we discussed previously. I sent the MRC ballot that you guys, uh, voted on, submitted the general assistance report. I had a meeting with EMR about recycling options. I should have something for your next meeting on that. I just called today, uh, with an update. And I con-, we conducted a safety meeting here at the town office, responded to Hancock County Sheriff's Office about getting some video footage of the, um, pig incident that was here in the town.
Pig incident.
You didn't hear about that?
No, oh, no, not pigs.
We had five very large pigs on the loose, uh, at like seven PM on a Saturday night for about two hours round and round the building and out to the solar array.
It looked like sheep, they appeared like sheep, so.
It took, it took quite a while to get them corralled and they had to put up fencing across our lawn and, um.
I live under a rock, I guess.
I know, I don't know why they didn't call me.
Wow, okay.
Sheriff's Office, um, just wanted to confirm that we didn't have any property damage, which we did not, um, and they wanted footage from our cameras. Uh, I ordered our first load of road salt for the season, um, did, worked on the fields board preparations, uh, for the last two appeals board meetings. Printed packets for the comp plan meeting, updated, uh, the gym use calendar that we, um, established with the school, um, to better track that now that we're, um, allowing resident use of the gym. Worked on the fee schedule, uh, work first comp renewal, meeting prep during this meeting. I attended a freedom of access training through MMA, prepared the financial reports, uh, worked on the third party apps and prepared the sustainability committee agenda for tomorrow night's meeting and contacted Affinity, um, about adjusting the street light issue with, uh. Office staff, uh, the clerk was, uh, busy assisting, uh, B and V with an audit, uh, on Friday. Maybe one in every five year period, so it's the first one we've had in five years. Um, we do have, by telephone now, still to do the pendulum. Um, she prepared foreclosure notices that'll, um, be ready next week. And updated the website with the new CEO info and comp plan survey links, uh, zoning maps, uh, were updated on the comp plan page as well for the request of the comp plan committee. Uh, and regular day to day operations at the town office. Public Works was busy helping with floats, who repairs to the truck one sander, removed a tree on Cali Town Shore Road. Snow plowing case was repaired by Boergerd, there was an exhaust issue. Equipment repairs after the storm, changed supply of steel, had to get a new wiring harness for the XLS plow. Cut some trees that were leaning on Dodge Point, uh, received the salt delivery and repaired a hydraulic leak on truck one. The harbor master was busy issuing permits, cleaning up the dock, took, uh, taking care of the dumpster, hauling out the, um, CO float, traffic control at the dock, uh, went through the traps at the dock, patched a rubber rail on the south float, um, got salt buckets ready for the dock for the winter and was busy plowing, um, this weekend and next year. And over the next few weeks, I am going to continue working on the FY twenty-three budget preparations and more research into the APRA funding.
Thank you, Jessica.
That APRA funding is still a pretty good pile of it that hasn't got any place to go yet, right?
Okay, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
Make a motion to set the date of the next meeting for Monday, January third, twenty twenty at five o'clock in the town office.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, January third, twenty twenty-two, five PM, town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have an executive session titled, uh, Town Manager Evaluation.
Did I interrupt this for a moment and just leave these? I don't want to be accused of any kind of, uh. There's, so there's six, there's five and one.
Oh, thank you, John, thank you very much.
I make a motion to find that public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employee's reputation and/or to violate employees' privacy rights and therefore to go into executive session to discuss the employment appointment and assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation and/or dismissal of an individual or group of public officials, appointees or employees as permitted by one MRSA four oh five dot six dot A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry, I'm out.
Executive session, I think at seven o'clock. Out of executive session? Okay, at seven twenty.
Done? Motion to adjourn?
Uh, you need to.
I make a motion to have, uh, I don't know if you really need to do it, I think you could just write it up, couldn't you?
Yeah.
I don't think you need a motion, do you?
Oh, okay, all right, um, I guess just motion to adjourn then.
Second.
All those in favor?